All right, we're on. Welcome, everybody. I now call the June 10th, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting to Order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. At this point, it will take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position number. Please say here when the city clerk calls your name.
Thank you. Councilmember Zornz?
Here.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Alderks?
Here.
Councilmember Kurt?
Here.
Councilmember Manke? Councilmember Dodd?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Al Cup?
Here.
All present with the exception of Councilmember Manke, who is absent and excused.
Thank you. Before we continue with the rest of the agenda, I'd like to reiterate some guidelines. For remote meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently and mute your microphone when not speaking. First up is meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to the meeting agenda? Nope? Then we will move on to public engagement opportunities. You can join us for the Juneteenth celebration. You can join the North Creek High School's Black Student Union to celebrate and recognize Juneteenth with an event of food, fun, and community for all ages. It's going to be June 19th from noon to 5:00 p.m. at North Creek High School. We also have Moonlight on Main. Bothell's new night market event is Moonlight on Main. It kicks off on June 13th, this Friday, for a special Pride Night and continues every Saturday thereafter right downtown. It is June 13th and 14th through September 13th, 2025, and it goes from 7:00 to midnight. We have an upcoming pet event. You can bring your dogs and cats to the Bothell Police Department for a special pet fair and free vaccine clinic. First-time pet licenses will also be free for Bothell residents during this event. It's going to be June 20th, 2025, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. All right, next up, we have a proclamation. And this proclamation is for Juneteenth. Whereas Juneteenth is recognized every year on June 19th to commemorate the day when 250,000 enslaved Black Americans in the state of Texas, which acted as the last bastion for slavery during the final days of the Civil War, were declared free by the United States Army. And whereas despite the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation two and a half years earlier, many enslavers continued to hold enslaved Black people captive until June 19th, 1865, which became a symbolic date representing African-American freedom and liberation. And whereas in order that we may never forget the evils of chattel slavery in the United States and its aftermath, we must acknowledge the injustices and suffering experienced under slavery. And whereas we recognize the significance of Juneteenth and the importance of continuing to engage in dialogue about race and racism in the United States to promote racial healing, reconciliation, and justice. And whereas we know that honoring Juneteenth is a symbolic step toward a more racially just and equitable community that must be accompanied by action to eradicate systemic racism, and we recommit ourselves to working together toward this goal. Now therefore, I, Mason Thompson, Mayor of the City of Bothell, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2025, as Juneteenth in the history of Bothell to promote healing, justice, and unity by recognizing the painful origins of this day and reaffirming our commitment to working toward equitable experiences and opportunities for all those in our community. And we have some folks here from the North Creek High School Black Student Union to accept. Y'all want to come up here? Welcome. Thanks for coming. You guys can say a few words here. This is yours, and if you want a picture afterwards, we'll happily do that. Awesome. And it's already pressed.
Hello, everyone. I want to first start with saying a quick blurb about our Juneteenth event. So this is North Creek's Third Annual Juneteenth Potluck and Cultural Celebration. It will be on June 19th at 12:00 p.m. at North Creek High School for a meaningful community gathering hosted by the Black Student Union in collaboration with the City of Bothell. This year's celebration will be bigger and better, featuring games, activities, performances, and plenty of delicious food.
Along with everything else that Oda Tochi has said, the City of Bothell and North Creek have a lot of information about our event on the City of Bothell's website. If you type in "City of Bothell, Juneteenth" and click the first link, there should be information about what you can do to help serve for Juneteenth and more information on our event. And also, if you want to sign up to bring food to our event, or if you want to sign up to perform, sing, dance, do anything at our event, there's links in our bio on our Instagram account called @northcreekbsu, and there's links in our bio to sign up.
Just to add on to a little bit about what they were saying, we're going to have a lot of businesses also there. So it's really a community event that allows everybody to come together and support Black culture and just kind of promote not just community, but also just getting everybody together in one spot. And there'll be food, games, so we really encourage that everybody come out and have a lot of fun. Thank you.
Awesome. I think we're going to get a picture now with the council. All right. The City has accepted public comment in writing as well as sign-ups for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the city clerk no later than 3:00 p.m. today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. When the clerk calls your name, you'll have three minutes to speak. Please note that council will receive your input, but we do not engage in discussion of these topics. Staff will make notes of items requiring follow-up. City clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Thompson. I have no sign-ups this evening. However, if anybody's in the audience who wishes to speak, please step to the podium, state your name, and you'll have three minutes. If you are in the virtual audience, please use the raised hand function, and we will panel you in. And I'll give people a couple of minutes to see if we have any sign-ups. And we do not.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to reports, we're going to start with the city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. I have a quick update, and then we'll be turning things over to... We have three separate briefings to provide with you tonight. So my first update is just some contextual note. Last night at their board meeting, the North Shore School District School Board approved... They conducted their annual review of security programs and the school resource officer program at Bothell High School and voted to approve an amendment to our interlocal agreement to continue the SRO program for the next school year. As a quick reminder, you may recall, a few legislative cycles ago, the state law changed in which there was a required annual review of the program, so there was no longer an opportunity to do something like a five-year contract. So each review... Each year, the school board reviews the contract. They seek feedback from the... From parents and from students and do further analysis. And again, the decision was made to keep it up for next year. As Chief Subolik is always good to remind is that this is a service that the city provides, and so we kind of stay back and let them go through that process and then see if that's a service they'd like us to provide again. With the acknowledgement that that answer is yes, that interlocal agreement amendment will be coming to the city council. We're going to try and move it for next week so that everything is tied up before the end of the school year and we have all of our resources lined up for the next school year. So that wasn't something that was on your projected agenda at a discussion, but I figured some of you may have been following along on that discussion, or you might hear questions from the community, so wanted to highlight that that's coming forward to you next week. With that, as I mentioned, we have three briefings for you tonight. A pretty, pretty heavy briefing load. And our first is from guests from our King County Library here in Bothell. So I'd like to welcome them to the table to introduce and to walk through their presentation to give us an update of what's happening at the Bothell Library and some previews of what's to come this summer. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you. Hi, Bothell City Council. I'm Alice Darnton, pronoun she/her. I'm a regional manager with King County Library System. And this is Katie Boyce. She is the librarian and information services manager, and we're really excited to be telling you about what's going on at the library right now. King County Library System has 50 library locations across the county, and one of them is the beautiful Bothell Library. Bothell residents have access to library resources and can use all the King County libraries, and we want you to be informed and aware of the ways that people benefit from what libraries have to offer. To accomplish this, the library presents to city councils every year or so about how we serve people. So thank you for creating time on your agenda for us to present to you. Tonight, we'd like to share about library use in the past year and highlight some resources and programs you may not know about and that we're excited are coming up. At the end of our presentation, we can answer questions. So Bothell is the largest of five libraries in what KCLS has called the Alder Region. Alder's libraries are spread out in a line east to west across the north end of King County. As regional manager, I oversee five of the... All five of these libraries, and the managers in the region report to me. Katie is one of my direct reports, and she supervises the librarians who work at Bothell as well as Lake Forest Park and Kenmore Libraries. The Bothell Library is currently open seven days a week to welcome people of all ages to enjoy books and other materials, computers, study rooms, and meeting spaces, programs, and more. King County Library System collects a variety of metrics to understand how people are using the library each year. Since the pandemic, the use of the Bothell Library continues to go up. Here's a snapshot of some statistics from 2023 compared to 2024, and you can see that we've increased across people coming in, items checking out, and computer use sessions. As you can see, we check out nearly half a million physical materials a year. We've also provided a handout with more recent use numbers. The back of the handout also includes KCLS's new "Curiosity Isn't Quiet" campaign, meant to reinforce the idea that the library is a place for interaction and asking questions. Here are a couple of questions people might ask about the library. What's that big box outside the front doors at the Bothell Library? Well, those are our holds pickup lockers. If you have a library card, you can have your hold sent there and then pick them up even outside of the library's open hours. It's pretty cool. Another question people ask is, how does that machine that automatically checks in my books work? So we have a short video, and we'll see if it will work. We didn't test this. Ah, okay. Here we go. The machine is called an AMH or an automated materials handler, and it's kind of like a book robot, which checks in and sorts the books into bins and carts to make it easier and less time-consuming for staff to put them back on the shelves. Not all KCLS libraries have one of these, but Bothell is a big library with a high level of circulation, so it's really helpful for circulating those half a million physical materials. Bothell Library got a spiffy new AMH since the old one was starting to fail last year, and we really like it. So now I'd like to turn the presentation over to Katie to share with you about library resources, programs, and outreach.
So with a library card, in addition to being able to check out books and physical materials from our library, a card gains patrons' access to a wealth of online resources. So patrons can access a subscription to Consumer Reports, Press Reader, which has newspapers from around the world, Libby, which is a very popular app for eBooks and downloadable audiobooks. Hoopla and Canopy provide streaming movies and documentaries, videos. And Mango and Rosetta Stone are language learning apps. All these are available at no cost for a patron with a library card, and they're really amazing resources. Another one that's become very popular is our access to the New York Times. You can get a daily access code and access the full content of the New York Times as well as the cooking, games, and athletic. So my wheelhouse is working with the librarians on library programs and outreach. So programs allow us to bring the library collection to life and provide an opportunity for people to engage with the library, connect with each other, connect with us, have fun, learn really important information. And then our outreach allows us to bring the library to places in the community. In Bothell, we have great relationships with the North Shore School District. One of our librarians has been there for 25 years, and she's done a great job creating really positive relationships with the school, where we bring our programming there. Some of the library programs we have at the library, we have Stuff for Children, so that's zero to about 11 or 12 teens, 12 to 17, 18, and adults. The most popular program we have is Storytime. We offer it four times a week, and some of our crowds are over 100 people. It's a popular place for families to connect, for parents to connect with each other, the kids have a good time, and we promote early literacy. So all the things that parents and caregivers can do to help get their kids ready to read. For teens, we have lots of different programs. A recent one was Free Comic Book Day, and you'll see on the left there a bunch of free comics that we gave away. And it's just a day filled with joy as people can come in and choose their comics. We have them for all ages, and it's a really happy event. It's every May. And for adults, we have a wide array of programs as well. We have three book groups: a Chinese book group, Russian book group, and a What Are You Reading? book group, where people bring and share what they're reading to get new ideas of things to read. And I'm also really excited about the plant swap we've had for the past three years. I think this was our third year, where people bring in plants to trade with each other, and we see a different clientele than we see at some of our other programs. And it's been really fun to see and see how enthusiastic people are. And alongside that, we promote our library collection-related plants, bring in experts from the community to share information, and it's a really great event. And then, right now, summer reading is underway. This year is really exciting because we are working with Seattle Public Library to offer Book Bingo, which is the summer reading challenge for adults. If you read... You choose what you read in different categories and make bingo or blackout and enter to win some prize drawings. And then we have Curious Creatures for ages zero to 17, and it just encourages kids to read over the summer, encourages to choose what they get to read over the summer, and they can get some prizes and enter some prize drawings. Our launch party for our summer reading programs is going to be on July 1st. From 5:30 to 7:30 p.m., there'll be a DJ. We're going to have Bowie from The Kraken. There's going to be bubble machines. It's going to be a lot of fun. So it's a free event at the Bothell Library on July 1st. Oops, sorry, guys.
I just want to say, I never thought I'd hear "we're going to have a DJ at the library." So that's awesome.
Curiosity isn't quiet, and also sometimes has dance parties.
I'm going to use that. Curiosity isn't quiet. I love that. I am not a quiet person. I'm sorry. Continue.
So that's our presentation. Do you have any questions for us?
Councilmember Zornz?
I knew you were coming up. I had a stack of books to return, and they're still sitting out there waiting to get returned, maybe after council tonight. That was fascinating to see behind the scenes how it's sorted. I still flip it upside down before it goes in. I know.
We can work it out. It's okay.
No, there's the message that's very polite. I do... So, anyway. Love the Bothell Library back when it was... Even when I'm dating myself, when it was in the Dawson Building, which is... No longer exists. So I do have a quick question, because I'm not going to say who it is. My husband has an old library card. Do those get inactive after a period of time of unused...
Yeah. If you don't use your library card for two years and you don't have any outstanding fees, then your card is taken out of our system. But it's really easy to get a new card. Just bring in a photo ID and something with your local address on it, and we'll get you a new card.
So he'd need to get a new card.
He can bring it in. We can scan it and see, and if not, we'll get him a new one.
All right.
Some people love to keep their old, like, legacy library cards. But we have some really cool new designs that we just launched this year from local authors, so you might consider taking a look.
Can we... Even though we have our card memorized, could we get one just for fun?
Yes, we can print out a barcode for you to put over the new barcode.
So you can keep your old number.
Yeah.
People do that.
Okay. But just a new card, if they're really cool, that'd be hard to pass on.
Yeah, they're on the sheet on the back.
Oh, they are? Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Kurt?
Thanks for the presentation. It's always exciting to hear all the summer events that are going on in the library, especially as school winds down. It's a great third place for youth and families to enjoy services and connect with the community. So I'm really grateful for the work that you do in our town. I have two questions. One is about fees and fines, and I'm just periodically hear about fees and fines being a barrier for using library services. I'm wondering what King County's fees and fines structures look like. Is that... Do you see that being a big barrier for folks in the Bothell Library system?
We have good news. When was that last year? Maybe two years ago? We removed our fees and fines structure apart from... So like, if you turn in a book late, you're no longer charged any money for it. And we did that in part because of the evidence that shows that it is a barrier to libraries, and it wasn't that big of a budget part for us. We were, as a system, able to no longer charge fines, which is great. If you lose an item, you do still have to pay for it or bring in a replacement. There's specific rules around that, but we no longer charge for the overdue books.
That's really exciting.
Yeah. And so, yeah, we have seen that really have a positive impact on people's use.
Cool. I've noticed... I go to the library to print, so I don't have a printer, and I've noticed that the structure has been changing a little bit around how much printing costs and how many free prints per week there are. Is there... Is that set by King County Council? Is that set by the library board? How... What are the... What's the regulatory body?
So that's a decision that KCLS made, because it used to be 75 prints a week, which was quite a lot. You'd see people walking out with like a half a room of paper, it seemed like. So... And it's down now. People can still get printing at no charge. It's 10 pages a week, and there's a charge if people want to print beyond that. And so the... And the structure of the library... The King County Council appoints the library board, but that's kind of where our connection stops. And so, yeah, those changes go through the library board, but that actually was, I think, an administrative decision that the library made based on really costs of paper, toner...
Toner is expensive, which is why I don't have a printer at home.
I know.
Makes sense. And then the last question that I had... I had more than two, was about... There's a community group in Shoreline that has a seed library and also a tool library, and that's really cool. I had no idea that, you know, other things besides media could be checked out. Is that something that... That the library is thinking about other types of physical checkouts?
We do have something that people can check out. We have Discover passes, and they come in a kit, and you get binoculars and stuff like that. So we have it's kind of dipped-to-toe in not books that you can check out. People can also get museum passes through the library, but when it comes to physical items, it's a challenge because there's the maintenance of those items. We can maintain books. We could do that all day long. We're experts on that. But when it comes to physical items, that gets tricky, so I think that's one of the reasons why we haven't explored it. Some libraries have done individual projects, like I believe the Kent Library had a seed library going for a time. So it kind of depends on the priorities of that particular community and the staff working there.
That makes total sense. Well, that's an exciting opportunity maybe for community-based organizations here, if they have a strong interest, to reach out and find if that's a partnership that works for KCLS. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you both for coming. I love the library. I am more of an audiobook kind of guy because I drive a lot, so it's great to have that resource. I am looking at the 19th century newspapers. That's why you see it. It's very cool. You see the print here, which is very interesting how the... But I love all the resources, the Press Access, New York Times Access, Mango and all those. I have used those resources in the past, so it's an amazing resource. Thank you. Thank you so much for having allowed... Providing access to all this. One question I have is the question about the numbers you shared in the presentation and over here. And you mentioned that we got this cool new sorter, the assembly belt, I guess we'll call it, a technical term. But because Bothell has higher numbers than other libraries, like, how do we compare to other libraries from a patronage standpoint? If you have that off your head.
We're winning.
We're winning.
No. So top circulating libraries in King County are Bellevue, Redmond, Smaamish, Bothell, and we kind of trade off who's in the lead. And then you can, depending on how you measure circulation, it can fluctuate, but we're in the top four. And... But some, like Bellevue, has a much larger collection, so their stuff goes out all around the county. We do a lot of action on holds, so people are getting stuff from other libraries and picking them up. So Smaamish does a lot of business with children's materials, so we're in the top, but I can't say exactly, like, we are the top or...
Yeah. I didn't mean as a competition.
No, I guess I'm kind of competitive.
Which is good, but then how... What are the... How do you know... How do you get to become a top five? Like, is it the people who are in the area, or is it the kind of material you carry?
It's the... I think it's the population size of the community. That seems... And also the makeup of the community. Like, Smaamish is a smaller community, but there are a lot of families that are checking out... Like, an adult might check out one book, but a parent would come in and check out 20 picture books. So that brings your circulation up, and I think that's one of the reasons Bothell is high. Our children's materials circ a lot.
Cool. Thank you.
Councilmember Dodd?
Thank you. I've been able to take my nine-year-old to the Bothell Library a lot recently, and he's a 10-books-at-a-time kind of kid, and he has me make a spreadsheet and print it out so he can check off what he's read. Like, he's so... He's competitive, like you.
Great.
And I just wanted to say thank you. So I used to go to that library when I was his age, and it's really nice to go there. And it's the same physical building, but there's updates, there's thoughtful changes in how it's organized and how it's used. And it's great to have that continuity and to get to share that with my kiddo and kind of rediscover it myself, because I think there were a couple of years where I wasn't as active there and then come back. So I just wanted to say thank you. I don't have any questions, except, Councilmember Kurt, you can always use my printer if you run out of free pages.
No questions on my part, but just a big enthusiastic thank you for all that you do. And even what you've mentioned here tonight is just kind of skimming the circuit... The surface of everything that the Bothell Library does for our community and, you know, just have years and years of really positive experiences there and really appreciate every... All the staff that are contributing. One event that I'd love to put a plug in for is a couple times a month on Saturdays, there's a teen group that's meeting in the community room, and I think that's really great for, you know, helping kids connect with one another in our community, and I'm glad you're doing it.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was just looking on historylink.org because Councilmember Dodd said that it was the same building that she went to when she was a kid. It was not the same building that I went to when I was a kid. So you can make fun of me for being old. And I was like, okay, 1995. That tracks when the new building came in. Thank you so much. Nobody expects the, like, library rivalry in these presentations, but I'm kind of into it, so like, that made me happy. I have a question. When I place a hold on something and it comes from a different library, does that count as a circulation for the Bothell Library, or does that count for the library that it originated from?
That's a good question.
If you check it out at Bothell, it counts for us.
Awesome.
Yeah. Thank you for making us one of the top three.
On my bus ride in this morning, I placed like 40 holds. So we use the library. No, thank you. This presentation, there are a couple of things that I didn't know about that, like, we can utilize, and so like, I've learned something. And so like I've learned something useful from me personally tonight. And I'm sure that I'm not the only one in here. So just thank you for doing cool stuff. And thank you because the library is just an amazing resource. It's one of the only third places you can go and not have to pay. Like, and that is just so important and so cool to have that resource there. So thank you for everything you do. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Allison and Katie. And if you didn't catch on, we'll look forward to next year's presentation. But if there's ever anything you need to share with us in the meantime, you have a receptive audience. So I love defining the rules of the game. That was a good move there. The second presentation we have today.
Hold on, what was it? Curiosity is loud?
That's definitely the, the Mason Thompson version of it, yes. So our next presentation is coming internally. And that is, as, as council will well recall, we, we had an emergency to respond to over the winter, and that was the 102nd Avenue Bridge closure. Here tonight is our emergency management coordinator, Colby Kavanaugh, who is, is here to just provide again, a reminder and overview of what took place in response to that emergency. And also some of the, the things that we've learned through that and particularly in response to the code changes that the council supported. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to Colby to walk us back down memory lane.
Thank you, Kyle. And thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council for having me back. I must say it is nice to be back when it's not an emergency. I do appreciate these times. As council mentioned, or as Kyle had mentioned, excuse me, there's no action being requested. We're just simply briefing on the response to the 102nd Bridge closure and sharing a little bit about what our next steps are coming forward. So we'll start with just a quick incident timeline. The, as council will recall, back in May of 2024, we brought forth code changes to the Bothell Municipal Code specifically on emergency management. Thank, thank you for passing those again. Was mentioned in the last time that I was here, it definitely helps the efficiency of our response. And I am grateful that we were able to lean in, into the, the response itself. The bridge incident itself first began on October 21st, 2024, when the bridge was struck on the underside from a truck traveling on SR 522 that was too tall for the requirements of the road. So the bridge was struck on the 21st. The 22nd, the city manager had proclaimed an emergency and activated the Emergency Operations Center for further coordination efforts. Public Works staff, who are the unsung heroes of this response, also began searching for repair contractors. And because we had that emergency proclamation in place, it was able to proceed rather rapidly. November 5th, we brought forth that proclamation per the code to you all for ratification and consideration. And again, thank you for ratifying that. And then January 9th is when we actually had work begin on the repairs. So a little over two months, including all of the holidays that happened in our winter, was pretty phenomenal that it was able to begin so quickly. And again, that was in large part due to that process that we were established back in May. So as repairs were ongoing, the bridge was struck a second time. That was on January 22nd, 2025. And thankfully, the, though the repairs, excuse me, though the strike did impact the bridge, the initial repairs were still able to continue while the assessment of the second bridge strike was able to be conducted. So we had a great team on site that was able to pair both of those without delaying the actual response. February 27th, we reopened the bridge. And I know that this is a little bit of a condensed timeline, but again, a little over four months at this point, we have gone from a bridge that is unsafe to traverse due to the conditions of the strike. And now it was able to be reopened to full traffic. And it was a really good day in the office. And then you'll notice we deactivated the Emergency Operations Center on March 10th. So that allowed a little bit of time between the actual bridge reopening to tie up any of the ends that we needed to with documentation and ensuring that all of the efforts were complete and anything that needed to carry forward with recovery efforts was able to be done in a coordinated manner. The slide you see before you is the Incident Command Structure. This is how we facilitated the Emergency Operations Center response. You'll note the Emergency Operations Board at the top is our executive leadership team here at the city. And the Emergency Operations Center Manager was myself for this. So we all funnel all of the decisions up through the appropriate individuals. We had, the Joint Information Center is our public information source. So that's where we're putting out the messaging. We're sharing the information with the community that they truly need to know the impacts and how we're able to resolve the incident. The operations section is the largest of, of the group. We had six different operations representatives activated, or positions, I should say. Those are up there on the screen, but predominantly we're staffed by our Public Works Department, our Fire Department, Human Services Coordinator, and then our Police Department. So when we talk about the work that was accomplished and the, the milestones we were able to reach in this response, the individuals on this chart, specifically the ESF representatives and our Joint Information Center on the city side are really what made that happen. I'm grateful for the team that was able to be accomplishing that. Some of our key successes that you'll note from the response was first, again, having that updated code in place. It really was identified even in our after-action report that having that in place allowed us to progress much quicker than maybe would have been possible with previous iterations of the code. We integrated human services into our EOC activation. And this is not something that you see on a widespread scale across our region, but I'm very thankful that we were able to accomplish here at the city. With the, the population and the parts of our community immediately across the bridge being so dramatically impacted, allowing human services and integrating them into this process allowed for much quicker decision-making and understanding the needs of the community and hearing them from experts. And he was able to, Onan is not here tonight, but he was able to actually communicate with some of the partners across the bridge in, in much better fashion that we were able to receive that information from him. So I appreciated that. And you will see that, again, not very often throughout the region, but it is a strength that our city has been able to invest. And it's a testament to where you have prioritized the, the sense of belonging in our community. One of the other key successes was the effective information sharing with community and our partner agencies. We did conduct feedback or collection of feedback from our community partners and received that was one of the top notches. And then we've also seen the information sharing feedback throughout the process as well, both from our partners and from the community itself. And then finally, but certainly not to be understated, this project itself was very efficiently managed through Public Works. So the repair itself, I'm, I'm speaking of, they were able to navigate a very complex process with engineers and a whole slew of different factors for the bridge. And we very much appreciated what they were able to accomplish. And again, I cannot understate four months to repair a bridge, two repairs. It was incredible. This is just a quick image of some of the damage that you may have seen if you walked under it or were able to, to check out on some of the city's social media. This is just one part of the repairs. There was multiple along the bridge, but it just helps understand, hopefully it helps you understand what we were looking at and how much of an impact this could have caused for our safety. The next steps moving forward, as every emergency operation does, we're looking towards how we can better our response, our capabilities and our community's needs, how we can better serve those. So currently we are finalizing an after-action report, which is a formal assessment of how we did, that takes into account feedback from all of our partners, all of our staff. And we'll be presented with a plan for moving forward. We have actions that are oriented with staff to, to better the response in the future. The second is cost recovery. So cost recovery is a very big component of this. It is ongoing. I'm happy to report that we have been able to recover some of the finance associated costs. However, those processes are ongoing as we move into what comes next with the, the other systems and my partners. And then finally, we have really tried to lean in proactively with this response, this being one of the largest responses that we have had in recent years post-COVID. Where we've utilized it to identify some of those key partners, both across the bridge and others that might be impacted by future disasters. We have been confirming contact information, something we learned pretty early on is that people change positions very frequently. So we've been confirming those and we'll look to that moving forward. We've been identifying potential community impacts. And this is really where a lot of the focus has been, understanding that this incident was just the bridge itself, but there are things that we can pull from. For example, how is it impacting our senior community? How is it impacting general transportation throughout the city? We're trying to identify those impacts, which will then allow for development of mitigative strategies moving forward for emergencies across the city. And you see that as note four, we are developing some of those strategies for the future projects as well as incidents. And we think that some of those can be done in an emergency fashion and some of those cannot. And we'd like to really enhance our response moving forward. I, I trust that any future emergency, hopefully we don't get one anytime soon, but I trust that we'll be able to use the code and that was a good efficiency. Now we're looking to how again, we can lean into our response, both to ensure that we are providing the best service to our community, but that we're also providing the best chance of recovery in an efficient manner. Because our goal at the end of the day is to get our community members back to where they're living and the most convenient day that they may have post-emergency. So with that, I will open to any questions you may have. And I thank you again for, for your support throughout this activation, for the city manager's support, and certainly for the staff, because they are the unsung heroes of this. I appreciate the community's ability to share their needs with us. And I appreciate the staff's ability to really take that to heart, because it wasn't just a bridge shutting down. It had very big ripple impacts and we were able to see that and respond accordingly. So I'm grateful to be on the team and grateful for your support on that.
Councilmember Zornz.
Thank you, Colby. This, I don't know if, don't know if it's because I'm a mom of five and I'm always kind of, you know, it's wired into me to look for disaster, but I really appreciate the work that you're doing very, very much. The more that we can build resilience in our city, within our neighborhoods, the survivability of a big disaster increases. I have one question specifically. I thought it was a great move. I'm going to give our city manager props, but I don't know if it was staff that put an A car over on the other side. And how did, how did that work out as a patch for being able to go and service that area?
It worked great. So pretty early on, our fire department staff identified the need. We are seeing increased calls across the bridge. And so they identified the need for having a full service unit stationed across the bridge. We relied pretty heavily for the evening hours on mutual aid coming out of Kirkland and, and Woodenville. But the unit that we were able to staff over there did manage quite a, quite a few calls. And we didn't have, I'll let my, my fire folks speak to the true nature of some of the incidents, but from what we heard in the EOC, we did not have anything large or unexpected challenges to the actual response. Our times maintained.
That's awesome. And I am grateful for mutual aid, especially for that part of Bothell.
Absolutely.
We really need it. And so it, to say, you know, the bridge gets disabled again by something else, another freak truck goes under it or something like that. Would you, did you find using the senior center where the, it was based out of workable? I mean, is that something that could be repeated or are you thinking, oh, we gotta come up with a different plan?
No, I think the senior center was a great partner, specifically to the aid unit. It was a great location because of its accessibility to East Riverside Drive there.
Right.
And it was, they were able to plus up units as needed via walking to get more support. So I think the senior center was a great partner. We're always looking for additional partners because while this was the 102nd Bridge, it may be a different incident throughout the city. So we definitely value those partnerships and we would continue that in the future.
That's good. That's what I was hoping you would say, that it was, that we could lean on them again if we needed to. And then I know that this was, I don't want to say trial run, but it kind of exposed where our weak areas and how it impacted the community. I got frequent texts and phone calls from a family who was concerned about there's, their daughter who has special, some special needs, worked on the other side of the slough and would walk late at night across to where she lives here on the other side of downtown Bothell. And they were concerned about her safety. So I know that this, I was gonna say dry run, but it was during winter months and it wasn't anything but a dry run. But I'm sure that there are lessons learned on how we can address public safety for these unintended impacts that happen.
Sure, yeah. Emergency management is a team sport. It truly is. And so I think all of the response partners and departments that had an active role in this took something that we can improve. And again, we're, we're really looking for that community feedback that we gather. We look to build off of that. And, and the after-action report will reflect some of those.
Well, you're part of why I love our city staff. You're very capable and you are on your toes thinking. So I appreciate what you do and thank you for this report.
Councilmember Kurt.
Thank you for the update on the after-action report and for laying out kind of a key summary of events. One of the things that I want to kind of draw attention to, you mentioned it's not a comprehensive list, but just three weeks prior to the disruption, we had approved on consent, an on-call for bridge repair. And that was kind of a, an important part of Public Works staff working behind the scenes to make sure that there was no gap in sort of coverage or availability of consultant staff to help assist in, in times of need. So I'm hoping that in the after-action report, we'll see recommendations for how to make that process of having continuous, continuous on-calls or making sure that there's no gaps in on-calls. Because if that, if there was a gap there, then it would have been a little bit more disruptive. So really wanted to thank staff for keeping an eye on those on-calls and making sure that there's no gap, but also recognizing that we can be holistic and we can incorporate emergency management into some of these more traditionally narrow and siloed on-calls. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ralicks.
I thought we might be going down the line. I was waiting for Deputy Mayor to speak. Everything that you've shared with us tonight is a really great overview of, of what all went into getting the bridge back to, you know, functional use for cars. But one, one detail that you didn't mention that I think is worth mentioning is how responsive the, the team was in getting information to the website and having updates on a regular basis so that members of the community could know. I directed many, many people to that website because it was the best source of information for, you know, updated, you know, status reports. And I'm very glad that you did that. You know, a lot of us, I think, heard from members of the community asking what was going on. And, and one of the things that, that we also up here had approved was design, or we were looking for funding to design a new bridge. And it was just kind of illustrative of, yep, you, your bridge goes out. And, and there were people asking, well, how do we like improve the design of the bridge? And it was like, we're not working, like, we really want to get it functional again as soon as possible. But can you speak to, and, and I realize this is not an emergency status and maybe this is a Public Works question, but can you speak to the status of design for future bridge replacement?
I cannot speak to that. I will leave that to the, to the experts at Public Works.
There's somebody coming behind you.
We can, we'll follow up. I think for tonight, let's keep it focused on the emergency response.
Sounds good.
But we'll follow up with some more information about where we're at on status of that. And again, we're really grateful for the federal funding to support it.
Yep. Thank you.
Councilmember Dodd.
Thank you. Thank you for the update and all the great work. I know we all talked about this back when the bridge was reopened. And I think day to day for people that feel, it felt like it was closed. And I think day to day for people, it felt like it was closed for a long time. I think anybody who knows government projects was like, oh, my gosh. Because it was really reopened so quickly for such a big endeavor. And just thank you to everyone who had a part in that. Like, that's amazing. And even just the scope of where I was hearing about the bridge being at was really, it was broad, you know, like NPRSA meetings, obviously the senior center had a lot of updates. We had a little mini celebration that won after it was reopened. And so it's just greatly, greatly appreciated. I did want to ask, and just like councilmember Aldrich's question, I'm not sure that this is a Colby question, but we had asked for some kind of update on like how, I don't want to say how to stop people from hitting the bridge, but like if we're going to buff up the signage or the, I had joked, that thing in the beginning of a parking garage that you hit if your vehicle is too tall, like something, you know, a block back from the bridge, something like that. Do we have any updates on that?
Yeah, so I will just briefly say that staff's recommending not adding additional signage, but I'd be happy to follow up in our check-ins to share a little bit more about the why behind that recommendation.
Okay, yeah, that I, not being a bridge engineer myself, like I realize that my ideas are just kind of like out there.
No, they're good thoughts. And we certainly heard from the community on that too. And at the, you know, at the same time, there's also, you know, the legal height of what vehicles need to be. And so we find that balance between what's real, what's practical and what's available. But overall, as we do an environmental scan across the city, we have concluded not to move forward with that. But I'll share more details with you, absolutely.
Thank you. But yeah, thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Colby. I'm sure this was one of the funnest, least stressful projects you've ever run in your life, in your career, right?
I handled COVID as the first county, so this is a breeze compared to that, maybe.
Yeah, yeah, well, I appreciate you and the rest of the team. And the team, yeah, exactly. So I was going to say, you and the team did an amazing job. So thank you. Thank you all so much. And it's a blessing in disguise, you know, the thing, one of the learnings is now you're going to take those learnings and apply them, create mitigation strategies and things for, you know, God forbid we get other emergencies like this. The question I have, will you be sharing some of those, you know, when you get there, what those learnings were and how we're going to be mitigating any other emergency in the future?
Yes, so we have, we have two processes that we could share. The after-action report, we can definitely share directly with you. We also have, we have what we call the hazard mitigation plan. And that process is ongoing and that's long-term mitigative strategies. And that is a public-facing document that we will request feedback from the community and participation so that those mitigation strategies are not just developed on what we think the community wants or needs, but actually has their input. So both of those are the primary ways and we can share that, absolutely.
I appreciate that. What's the timeline for those?
The after-action, if all goes well, should be completed by the end of July. The hazard mitigation plan is scheduled to wrap up in December. So some of that outreach will be coming down the line very quickly.
Okay, here in the next six months or so.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, cool. I can't read my handwriting, that's why you seem squinting. Oh, a very important question, maybe that's a city manager question. But, you know, we had some learnings, we moved very fast. And we were able to shuffle some, I'm assuming some funding around and all that stuff. How can we apply those learnings to non-emergency projects to speed up other city projects? City manager question, yes.
Certainly, and Kwan Wong would be able to follow up too. But I, you know, overall, that's some of where, in the conversations we've had about reserve funds and having, how do we, we came to you specifically to update that reserve fund and carefully construct what the definition of an emergency use or what would happen. And again, the bottom line of that policy is, is that if we are moving funds around, it comes to council for approval. We have that, we do have that flexibility within reason in terms of when there are opportunities to look at things. And again, any of those changes do require council approval. In the declaration of emergency, that did open things up around our purchasing policy, but ultimately it's still to be confirmed to you. So I think there are some aspects of this is that we do have in place and we look to have as much flexibility as we can. The reality though, too, is that our bank accounts are only so big. So some of the projects we want to do are just so large that there's no amount of creative borrowing would help without going externally. So I think there's a balance on that. I'd love to talk through some scenarios with you though, if there's anything specific that you're thinking about. We do look at that in terms of like within capital facility plan at times, that sort of thing. What are the, where are the places that are trade-offs or if there's a project that is taking longer than others? So one of the principles that we really do try and follow is that we ultimately carry the responsibility as staff of budgeting at the bottom line. And we commit to you that our operating budget will be within a certain framework and we do everything we can to make sure to use that discretion responsibly, but creatively also to get the work done.
I appreciate that. And it wasn't digging on the finance, I mean, we have an amazing finance department and leadership. I mean, this is not.
No dig detected, no dig detected.
Yeah, so I was going, I'm asking more on a, like, if funding is a blocker, then, if funding is a blocker, I mean, if you have a $200 million project, you have a $20 million, you're not going to reserve 200 million for these things. But like a project time, I was more of about a project management type, like here's a task list, how can you shrink down the, you know, timeline for a project?
Yeah, good question. And I think one of the things that helps in terms of this emergency is that we are then reprioritizing work. So I think that's something to keep in mind too, is that like, if we want to do things faster, we would do fewer things. If we want to do a broader range of things, then there are going to be times with limited resources unless we, you know, the only way to go faster is to add resources if we think about the project management triangle. So the, part of the acknowledgement of declaring an emergency for this and part of then also implementing the ICS structure that Colby showed. And I was thinking of that in your question too, councilmember Zornz, around the decision to put an aid car. Part of that is that then we're having dedicated frequent meetings with teams where all of the stakeholders are in the room. And so we can, you know, ask the question of, hey, is this possible? We have finance there, we have operations there, we can figure it out. We have somebody who's going to reach out to the senior center in this case. So the people there, and then we can rapidly move forward. So I do think there is some value to that, that we are, we continue to apply to other projects as well of particularly like bringing the stakeholders together in the same room so that we're not having serial conversations, but let's move quicker. But ultimately then, yeah, again, it's that balance. And certainly in this case, with the emergency of an impact of community members who could not move around the city, like it behooved us to prioritize that time above other work and get it moving faster. So I think when we, when we have something that is a real or perceived crisis or something that our city council gives us direction of, we want this to move forward, that's when we look at, what do we need to drop so that we can push this quick?
A hundred percent, it's a prioritization question. It becomes a prioritization question. So thank you, thank you for that. Two follow-ups on the presentation itself. One, you showed the org chart and you were sitting there. What happens if you go on vacation and something happens? Never, never. Nobody approves his vacations.
So we actually train up our staff. We have a bench of qualified staff to fill each role within the EOC. So we train quarterly, unless there's an emergency, then we use that as our training. But we do have a bench deep enough within our staff that are trained and qualified to fill those roles. So it's not just reliant on one person, but it's reliant on the skill sets. And each department provides staff for the EOC. In the EOC manager case, we have a backup that comes from fire, PD and public works, which are three of the most, they would have the most responsibility in some of our more common hazards. And so they have that training capable so that way I can step aside if need be. And it's not just in vacation even. This was thankfully not high demand in a short time. It's had a little bit more longevity to it. So we were able to have some breaks and mental health checks between. But some of the higher stressed, shorter, compact incidents might require 48-hour shifts, 24-hour shifts. And so having that bench helps us rotate through staff so that we are not experiencing burnout as fast.
That's good, that's good, that's good to hear, thank you. Finally, so we had to front some of that, from the reserves, some of the cash to fund this work. And now you said there's ongoing, the process ongoing to recover all the funds? There's some funds, like how, why does it take so long? Or is this a normal period, a normal timeline to recover the funds from whoever it is we're recovering from?
So the timeline varies between incidents. This one specifically, where we had two different bridge strikes, that adds some complexity to it, the matter in which we're recovering those funds, whether it be through insurance or other means, that adds to it. So I can't speak to the full length of the timeline. I think that's probably more of a finance and a legal question, but it does change between. And so in this case, we have seen some pretty good movement on some of the recovery. And there is still a piece that we would need, that they're still pursuing to recover as well.
Yeah, go ahead.
The follow-up to that was like, now our reserves are not full? Or maybe they are, are they full? Or, and if not, then we need to refill it just in case, again, God forbid something happened.
Yeah, I mean, and that, good question. And that is part of why, as the recommendation of the budget process is we're looking to grow our reserves to a higher level for those reasons. Positive news on this one is that I believe we're roughly 50% recovered on this incident. So that's, that's good news. And the timing of it is, is like, if you ask a friend about if they've been in a car accident of how long it takes for insurance companies, and that's where they, so you think about that on the larger level, and as Colby mentioned with two companies and that process and recovery, there's a lot to it. But what, one of the things that Colby's program does that I think is a big help is from, as soon as we start with an emergency response, we kick in dedicated financial coding where our billable hours from staff as well as anything we sign to or buy goes to that code. So we can track exactly how much it costs, it counts. It goes against the project and we can then be focused on working with our outside support as well of recovering all of the money associated with the incident. So again, from the standpoint of response time from now the end of the incident, I think being at 50% is relatively positive. It could be, it could be a little higher, but it could be a lot worse too. So, and then again, we'll continue to pursue payment on the rest.
All right, thank you, thank you. I appreciate you and the team again for moving fast on this.
I just hope nobody else hits the bridge. Like, that's what I'm going for. Like, let's not do this again. But I'm glad we had systems in place and staff in place that could just do a really good job of getting this taken care of for the community. So thank you, Colby. Thanks for coming and downloading about it today. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And while that org chart lingers for a second, and as we prepare to move to the next topic, I'll just note that it's a busy season for the city overall. But Colby's also involved in it on the 4th of July. And so we activate the same structure because we have literally every department that's supporting Bothell's biggest party. And it's supported by many, many departments and, but coordinated also through emergency management so that we are ready for, ready for anything. So I appreciate Colby's time tonight and we look forward to seeing him out at the pancake feed on the 4th. All right, our third presentation tonight is an update, coming back to the council after direction we received roughly a year ago related to middle housing. With some background and an update, I'm going to turn things over to senior long-range planner, Ray Sosa. I'll just note as Ray brings the slides up too, of like, this is a good example of how we have a bench and we take, it takes a team and we're thankful when our bench grows. While what you're going to hear tonight, council gave a direction in the March timeframe of 2024, Ray joined the city, the very beginning, like the day after Labor Day of 2024. So this precedes him, but we are very thankful to have his mind and his hands on the follow-up of making it real. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to Ray.
Thank you, Kyle, and thank you, council. Good afternoon, members of the council. Tonight, community development staff are here to provide an update on the middle housing code. No actions required tonight. This briefing is intended to provide city council with an update on potential zoning code amendments to middle housing allowed densities. So just to provide a brief background, at the March 5th last year, on city council meeting, the city council passed resolution 1473 directing staff to develop a housing action plan. As part of that resolution, it also set a target date of June 2025 for staff to provide a proposed draft of the middle housing code, which aligns Bothell to a tier-one equivalent city. As promised, staff is here tonight to present that code. As a reminder, the city has met all the base fundamental middle housing code requirements established by HB 1110. It can now leverage those code updates completed last year and the comprehensive plan update as moment to respond to city council's direction to update the middle housing code. On the image to the left, all the residential zoning that allows up to four units is highlighted in light yellow after the adoption of HB 1110. On the right, in orange is highlighted all the residential zoning that now allows up to six units as part of the increase in density after the adoption of the 2024 comp plan. Note that in some places, six units per lot could be exceeded depending on underlying zoning. And so here is the draft middle housing code presented in a chart. You can also find the full draft text in your packets. The following potential changes into the current middle housing code are all, are in alignment with both HB 1110 and the council's direction from resolution 1473. The adjustment from four units per lot up to six expands density opportunities across more than 40% of the city. However, it may potentially require evaluation and updates of the comprehensive plan and associated environmental review process. And so next steps tonight, we will receive your feedback on the proposed draft zoning code based on the feedback received tonight. We staff will assess potential amendments, looking at comprehensive plans based on assumptions and the environmental review process that may need to be amended. We're also scheduled to move planning commission next week. And so in conclusion, no actions required tonight. This briefing is intended to provide city council with an update on potential zoning code amendments to middle housing allowed densities.
Thank you, Ray. And just to reiterate before opening up for council discussion, again, the code element of this is a fairly straightforward code. So we didn't feel like a study session conversation was needed. However, if there are things that you'd like to see substantially different, we'll always be happy to bring this back at a subsequent meeting too. But we had a sense from past conversations and certainly through the comprehensive plan, this has been a topic that's been discussed a lot, that this code would accomplish what council was asking for. With that, I'll turn things over to the council for discussion.
Nobody?
I have a question.
Okay. On the, on the proposed action, it took us up to six units, but it didn't look at anything to do with the base units per lot. Are we going to bring the base unit up to four?
We looked at, we looked at the base units. We looked at if we went up to four, we'd miss out on that opportunity for one of them being an affordable unit. So the way that we put it together here was to kind of the best of both worlds, the current methodology of if you want to go above two base units, you're going to have to do one affordable. If you want to go beyond that, you'll do two affordable units when you're not within a quarter mile of transit. The fear there was if we went, if we raised the base units to four with the opportunity to go to six, you wouldn't see any affordable requirement with the four units. So creating a step level essentially to get a single unit with four or two with six.
Okay. So when we originally started scoping middle housing somewhere back along the timeline, when dinosaurs roamed the earth, it feels like a very long time ago now. We originally went out to our community and we scoped four units per acre. Yeah, that's what I was going to say, or four units, sorry, I'm going to pause. Four units per lot. And we asked if we could do that and we were told that the state bill passing it essentially brought that affordability requirement in. But, you know, four or five years ago, we went out, we did a bunch of public outreach and we made a commitment to our community that we were going to look at four units per lot by right. And I want to follow through on that commitment. And I am completely content with the additional units for designated affordability. But I think just going to a base of four everywhere is really following through on the promise that we made to our community a few years ago that got delayed because of the House bill. But that's something that I would like to see. And if we can do something to incentivize affordable units above and beyond that, fantastic. I'd like to see that be the floor.
Question?
Yeah.
How would that affect HB 1220 quotas and things that we have to do?
And we can get into the details at a future study session. I mean, as as part of the housing action plan and the work that we'll be doing throughout the the process here, this really was meant to to come back and provide you with the concept and a timeline as we have to go through a comp plan update to make sure that we we accommodate those changes this year. So timeline would be wrapping something up in December would be the the ideal goal here. So there's plenty of opportunity to have this conversation about how it relates to 1220 as we move.
Yeah, because if we do four units per lot by right, it'll be a good conversation to have. It's like, how is that going to affect your algorithm that you used to use AI terminology? The how to you, the program that you use to come up with the comp plan numbers at 12,700, whatever, is that going to affect or per, you know, AMI level, is that going to affect things also? Unless that was been taken into consideration before.
It's it's possible, and I think we'd we'd want to have a deeper discussion.
Let's do it. What do you think? Mr. Mayor, have a deeper discussion? To understand the ramifications of this, I mean, I don't disagree. I'm just saying we need to look at how it affects the other things also.
Yeah, I mean, I'm curious what the other factors are in it, but I mean, it shouldn't be that complicated, should it? Like, an extra two units on a small amount of the city by right? Like, it doesn't feel like that would be a big crazy thing if we're already doing a comp plan update.
Can I suggest a study session to drill down?
Well, why don't we have a conversation among all of us here before we decide where we're going to go?
Yeah, I'm just suggesting.
To to tip that conversation to mayor, I just want to make sure that, like, as I take notes that I'm tracking, I think then to accomplish what you're saying, looking at this, the code on page 12 of the packet, if you look at 14C1, essentially, we strike after the comma of if at least one unit above base unit of two units is affordable housing. So the development of four dwelling units per lot in RCs and RL zones and then the A and the B. But then the condition of affordability would show up in two, which is around six dwelling units unless if at least two units are affordable. Is that is that tracked with what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, that's the so we talked a long time ago about going basically up to the larger, like.
Yes, to the 75,000.
Larger to your city.
Yeah.
And that is what that is. And if we're going to raise that, I want to raise the base density as well.
So for yeah, for the basis of conversation, I just wanted to make sure people knew what they were responding.
Council, we're done.
Thank you. I agree with both the mayor and the deputy mayor in that I, too, had thought that we were going to just a base of four. And I don't want to mess with all the work we did on the comp plan to satisfy 1220, but just every state law. It's just nice when we're in compliance with state law. I think we all appreciate that. So if that has to be a study session, great, but whatever we can do to encourage more housing, especially, I think, middle housing is expected to be smaller than single family homes, offer more options. And so I'm, I'm hesitant to, I agree with what the mayor said, that it, I had kind of thought we were marching toward after talking to the community to the four as the floor. And so just talking through that, I think, would be really helpful to understand if there's a good reason not to do that. I'm open to hearing it. But for me personally, I feel like it to go back on what we were talking about with the community, it'd have to be a pretty good reason.
Council member Curd.
Thanks. I am also kind of wondering about the four as floor. And I'm also kind of wondering about how two units in a sixplex being affordable would really, I'm wondering if that makes economic sense to subsidize and whether that level that like 33% of the units being affordable mandated affordable might be actually a barrier to creating middle housing outside of the quarter mile of transit. So and with all the other kind of requirements that we've set on the development, I'm just kind of wondering, have you shopped this around with like the development community? Are they receptive to, is that something that they're willing to provide is 33% of the units affordable in a sixplex?
So one thing I'll jump in on that is I believe, and our experts can confirm, I believe that actually comes directly from state, the state law of what's the requirement from from the House bill. So the the four units, that that is what the tier for 75,000 population and above is. And so in our analysis of that, what we're looking at is is that since the state law requires to go above, it requires two affordable units. If we like were to skip that, for example, or be within transit, right? So that's where we see the map of what we have. If you were to climb over that and just say, we'll allow it, the state law does mandate that 33% of affordability. Do we think it's, I'll say it on behalf of the team here, do we think that it's likely? Maybe not, but that is, it does come from from the state law of it. So that's where our compliance factor jumps in. So yeah, to go go beyond now, again, with if we tier up, that also then would allow for the four base. So that's, I think, to the mayor's question and some of the themes that we're hearing, I think that's something we can look at.
Yeah, I would encourage us to look to be as flexible as possible within the state guidance, just because 33% of middle housing is just not, that's not going to work in today's economic climate or probably into the future either. So I would support looking at a four, a floor of four. But if we need to have a study session or talk about it more, I'd like to delve into it a little bit more.
Council member Alderks.
Thank you, mayor. And thank you for all the work of bringing this forward. I'm actually going to ask, I think, an interpretation question on slide five. When you say current base, is that under the current comprehensive plan or is that under the old comprehensive plan and that's how things have been built in Bothell previously?
The slide or sorry?
Slide five, that one, yeah.
The current base is what we have today from the 2024 update effective January 1 this year.
Okay. And and there hasn't, you know, we adopted it six months ago. I'm guessing we haven't seen a whole lot of building happening that would comply with the current comprehensive plan.
We've seen a few smaller projects, but nothing that's including affordable housing.
Right.
Under middle housing, no.
Okay. I would, I would be really curious, kind of along the lines of council member Curd's questions around like, you know, what are developers saying and and what is their, you know, appetite for for both risk and reward when it comes to building these affordable units? I I understand that the spirit of the state law is to provide the option and opportunity. But I do wonder, like, how does that translate into reality? And kind of along the lines of the conversations that we're hearing on the dais tonight, I I would welcome the conversation about a base of four units on a lot and and bringing that back as a study session. But so kind of along the question of like, how how do we get at what is realistic and doable for developers when we don't have developers on staff?
I think the one thing that I would just add on after this is my, my read, similar to what council member Curd is going, is what I hear from people is that a 33% affordability mandate means it won't get built. So for me, the base density is the whole reason we're doing this, like, because I don't think there's going to be a whole lot of sixplexes get built where two of them are deed restricted. Like, I just, I don't know if we've had any, like, I don't see that happening a lot. So for me, kind of, the whole point is the base density to bring it up to that four units per lot and give people that flexibility so we can get more homes because a big part of the problem is we just don't have enough. So I guess after hearing the discussion, like, what do you guys think the best path forward is in terms of study session, in terms of bringing something back? Like, where do we, what do we do next?
I, we can come back with a study session this fall to to finalize this. We would, we would want to do one anyway as part of all of the housing work before we look to adopt or propose any adoption of any, any code amendments. So as we go through that process, just wanting to basically get the nod to move forward with this as we we amend, you know, striving towards six, we, you know, if we know that that's the the direction, then that's what we will be looking at within comprehensive plan update, our control total assumptions for development, transportation element, like making sure that everything is consistent across the board there.
Yeah, and I think that captures, I was gonna, I mentioned, we'll, we'll do a follow up after tonight, too. I was gonna ask about whether or not we could, we could propose, move forward kind of with scenario A and B. But I heard the deputy mayor's concern was, or that your inquiry was really around, we know that there's also this mandated number of affordable units that our comp plan has to be able to accommodate and is there, is there an implication on if we make decisions that don't, that could require affordability and don't have it? And I think that's what you're saying. So what we can do is we can bring something back that has two scenarios and and we'll look deeper into that of what the impact could be and if there's anything, and that can be part of the study session discussion. But I think we can move it, I think we can move it forward prepared to have that conversation. But we don't have to, like, meet iteratively to say, before we do anything, let's find out. I think we can, I think we can move it forward, hearing the feedback tonight.
I see the point, the after council member Curd and others mentioned the developer, because that is a stakeholder in the whole building of homes. I see why having a base of four units makes sense. I just want to see if that, to your point, that has implications on the state mandated requirements, because even if a state mandates a requirement, we probably have to go to the state and say, you have to change it because none of that stuff is going to get built anyway. So let's figure out a way to get more housing built in Bothell while we maintain our compliance with state, state law or everything else.
Yeah, it may give, may give, you know, some good speaking points to have a conversation with delegation, right? If we, the more we can kind of work that out, need to have some meaningful case study to share.
Anybody else? I think we're good. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. I'm looking forward to this coming back. It's been a, it's been a long road talking about middle housing and winding.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is council committee reports, community reports and conversations. Councilmember Zornz.
Okay, we've passed the ball. Okay, I have a few things here, just some updates and points of interest. Last week, for the mayor, I sat in on IWG, the Intergovernmental Working Group, and we heard the anticipated costs and short files falls of the projects, highway projects here in the state. Pavement and preservation for state highways did not meet funding needs. Dow Constantine is excited for the groundbreaking of our bus maintenance in Canyon Park. There will be, this is germane to us, there will be utility work in October, so expect two weekend closures on 405 522. This is a point of interest for the folks here in Bothell and Woodinville who commute on 522. The camera is going to be moved around to help regulate speeding, so it's going to be, you'll see it in different spots. And then the summer, this is a, just a public service announcement, summer projects are all over the state this summer. We should expect traffic even on the alternative, alternate routes. And they recommended checking out WashDOT's real time map before heading out. Then for NPRSA, which was last month and we meet next week, so I hope we don't sound like a broken record here when we give the update next time we meet, we decided that NPRSA board members will attend North Shore Senior Center meetings so that we can build communication and familiarity between our two groups. As the North Shore Senior Board understands the expectations of the tenant agreement, we are amending the current contract to be extended one more year and then we will get that agreement before NPRSA soon. With the same levy consultant that the North Shore School District used, we got to dive into the demographics and voting participation expectations for the NPRSA levy. We are looking at levy rates that would cost the average home about 50 bucks a year. We also got updates on completed projects and the current projects of the crawl space grease trap in the Health and Wellness Center and the vegetation trellis replacement in gazebo as a covered rest area for the senior center. And then last week, I intended attended an MSRC class for encouraging ADUs in your community. And they, there was one topic that I thought might interest all of council. We heard examples of codes in a couple communities, but what I found most interesting are the tiny homes on wheels called THOs out of Port Angeles. They are no larger than 400 square feet and they're certified through LNI using only ANSI requirements. They found that if the city added additional requirements, it only discourages THOs. The only thing that the city requires is a certificate of occupancy. Property owners can get permits to build pads for future tiny homes, so you can get your pad put in place and ready for a future tiny home. Short term rentals, they found helpful, especially for college towns. My ears perked up on that one. They're more affordable than ADUs. My, my ears also perked up on that because people like the idea of ADUs, but costs might be prohibitive. Like manufactured homes, they want the homes off their wheels and on, and on foundation blocks with tie downs. And they also recommended that as a city that you stay in communication with neighborhoods and associations, especially for larger, more impactful codes, listen to the team members and take councils from them. Port Townsend has THO information on their website. And last but not least, I want to do a shout out of thanks to the Daughters of the American Revolution and our park staff for the flags that they placed in our cemetery at the Pioneer Cemetery. Those were graves that were marked, were not a reflection of deaths in battles. This was during Memorial Day weekend, but it was a good reminder of those who put their lives on the line as far back as the Civil War and then making Bothell their home became part of our legacy. So I really appreciated being able to walk through the park and look at the flags and reflect on the lives that were lived here in Bothell as they shaped Bothell.
Councilmember Curd.
Thanks. On Friday, I attended the King County Cities Climate Collaboration and we discussed planning for transportation electrification in the state and in King County. Had a presentation from Department of Commerce, and if you're interested, let me know.
All right. Next up is projected agenda discussion. And if nobody has anything, I would love to accept a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilmember Dodd.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion from councilmember Dodd and a like half a second from both of you. We'll call it councilmember Alderks. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none, city clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name, councilmember Zornz.
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Curd?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Al Coburn?
Yes.
Passes 6-0.
Thank you. It is 6:30. We, 7:30. We, 7:30. I'm having a great night.
It is time for a break.
It is time for a break. We'll be back at 7:45. Welcome back. All right. Next up, on ordinances and resolutions, we have an ordinance authorizing an election to renew a nine-year safe streets and sidewalks levy. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and City Council. We are back with you tonight, following a study session two meetings ago. And before you will be legislation to put a question before the voters of Bothell related to a renewal of the safe streets and sidewalk levy. I'm joined at the table, in case there's questions tonight, by Kwan Wong, our Finance Director, and Aaron Lenhart, our Public Works Director, and we do also have a number of other staff who are expert at this in the audience tonight, just for support and, yeah, positive vibes. So tonight, what's going to be before you is, as I mentioned, we're looking to bring a question to the voters, and the ordinance for consideration would authorize a November 2025 election to renew the nine-year safe streets and sidewalks levy lid lift at 50 cents per $1,000 of assessed value. With that, then, too, comes some other responsibilities. So part of what will be included in your motion, direct staff to advertise for committee members to advocate for their approval or the rejection of the ballot measure, it's known as the pro-con committee, and that action would come back to council on July 15th. Our City Clerk has prepared an advertisement to get into the newspaper. We would be sending that out, again, pending your direction tonight, so that it would be published within the next, or by the end of this week, as well as, we will put that information on our website, again, calling for people who are interested in serving on the pro-con committee, committees, those are two separate committees, obviously, and with additional information about what is required for that. So as we discussed at the study session, we're, we're starting from a place of, of renewal, and that is because the community did give support for a levy here nine years ago. And as promised to the voters at that time, we have, we have delivered. We've also provided an accountability report annually to talk about what's been done. And again, sometimes a picture tells that best, as you can see on one side of your screen, but also, putting it to numbers, we've repaired almost 100,000 square feet of roadway. We're looking constantly at how to even do that better, and the team, I think we highlighted in the study session, was around using new equipment and procedures of being able to reduce the time and the number of staff required to do a repair, so that we can increase annual repairs by 60% this year on the current levy. Staff have filled more than 15,000 potholes. Can you imagine the number of emails that we would get from, as a city, if those, if there was 15,000 potholes unfilled and on our streets? Replaced approximately 15,000 linear feet of sidewalk on school rock routes, and as well as improved signage for school zone safety. We've also been able to distribute that work throughout the community, as highlighted by the map on your slide. And a big part of what we have done, and a reminder, it comes up in our financial presentations, is that the city has a hallmark for being able to leverage funding that does come from this community, but having it grow. And we have been able to leverage $8.7 million from the existing levy to match to an additional $13 million, which helped accelerate projects in our community. We've also constructed four high-priority walk routes and 11 flashing crosswalks, and maintained a pavement condition index of 71 for arterials. The thing that I'll always impress upon people, when we talk about pavement index rating, it's not something that most of us think about, but our, we're fortunate that our maintenance and operations team does, and our streets team does. And that is because when we're looking at for that pavement index is not anything other than making sure we're taking care of, of what we already have. So there's many sayings about an ounce of prevention, but this really is the, we do not want our streets to deteriorate to a certain point, because then, instead of, instead of improving our pavement condition, we're replacing streets. And Bothell is essentially, you know, a built-out community of where we've built the roads that we need to build, now we need to just make sure that we maintain them, so we don't have to build them again. And again, as I mentioned, the annual reports has been part of this, and will continue to be part of our commitment to the community, should they give us the opportunity, and are all available online for people who want to look back year by year at the, some of the accomplishments. So tonight's action, again, is about a ballot measure to renew this levy, and our current condition is that the levy does expire at the end of this year, as we talked about during the budget process. We do have, we have the requirement of always presenting a balanced budget, and so we do have a scenario in our current budget that funds the work that we do at a very diminished level, but it keeps, keeps our team intact and keeps things, keep things that are broken fixed through 2026, but ultimately, the levy expires at the end of this year. We have, our proposal to council for consideration tonight would be presenting voters with that opportunity to renew and make that decision of continuing the delivery of the safe, safe streets program, maintenance, repairs, and future projects. We're going to talk a little bit more about what, how the upcoming vote would be structured, or what would be included in it. And again, it would be at the, at the proposed 50 cent rate, which was what the original levy was as well. And that breakdown that I mentioned, so there's a slightly broader set of priorities in this one, but we would continue to be focused on keeping our roads safe and maintained. We want to, we want people to get where they need to go and get there predictably, and that maintenance is an important piece of it. We would be focused, so that would be at 30% of the overall revenue. The pavement repairs and upgrades would be just under 20%. And again, that's that, that quality condition of making sure that we're not asking for a bigger ticket later when we have to do full replacements. So it's a good investment in taking care of what we already have. We would be continuing to invest in safe walking and biking routes. A lot of that is the planning work and the matching work, so that we can be competitive to bring in funding to, to Bothell from outside sources. And then also, when we, when we focus so much on the comprehensive plan over the last two years, a big element of this proposed package as well is looking at future transportation projects, and both, to the conversation that we had about emergency management response around the idea of, how do we prioritize when we're just short of completion of a project? We want to be able to have a funding source to be able to get things over the finish line, both in, in planning and implementation. So those are some of the things that we would see, see coming forward. With that, again, we're happy to answer any questions, but also, we'd be looking for council for, for a vote tonight, and any further direction. Before you is an ordinance, again, that would authorize a renewal levy to be presented to the voters, and we will turn it over to the council for any questions or discussion.
Real, real quickly, yes, for me, and we're going to vote on moving this forward. I just appreciate all the work that's been in here, and like other council members, I look for projects that I feel profoundly about for the people of Bothell in the, in what we're looking at taking care of, and I see a couple of them there, and I just want to say, without, you know, giving them any more undue attention, thank you for the thoughtfulness and the comprehensiveness that you put into this plan. So I just had to say, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I'll note, too, that in the informational materials that we would put out for the community to reference, there's a lot of good work from the council, too, in terms of prioritization and listening to the community and the input that they've given us over the years. So we're thankful for, again, it's, it's something that doesn't just come out of, out of thin air. It does come through the conversations, the outreach that we take place, and we appreciate council of, when you ask the thoughtful questions of looking at the capital facilities plan and the budget, and helping to really ensure that the prioritization is right, and that will continue into the future as well.
Well, just, just as a follow-up to that, listening is always, listening and being heard is, is the best of moving a city forward, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for, you know, continuing to move this forward as we've given feedback and encouraged this to, to, like, this was just the next step, and you're getting us closer to the next step, which actually, I think will make it official, and, and that's fantastic. One question that I have is, and I may be misremembering this, so please correct me if I'm wrong, but with the first levy, there was a task force that was developed, I believe, where community was able to come together and have feedback. Will there be a similar task force related to the renewal?
Thank you, and thank you for remembering. We don't anticipate doing a task force this time around. The council has worked, as City Manager mentioned, has worked in concert with the community to do a lot of prioritization work in the recent history with the comprehensive plan in particular. So we do have a fully prioritized list of sidewalks, for example, and that task force was specific to safe school walk routes. So the, the work that the task force did is still relevant. It's still projects that staff are working on, and those remaining projects are still on the prioritized list, very high positions. So it's not our current plan to do so.
I think that's an excellent explanation, that, you know, the work of the task force is still relevant to current projects and, and future projects that are still being planned. I think at one point, we had meant, we had talked about following up with the, those who had been on the task force. Have they been followed up? Do they know, have they got, received notice of, of what's happening next?
I believe staff are still working on that update, is my recollection.
Great. Thank you.
Steve is nodding behind you, so.
In case the eyes on the back of your head were obscured.
Yeah, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the work. Thank you for leading us to this point. I know there were, you know, some, a lot of questions, and everybody asked a lot of questions. I know I did ask a lot of questions, and this is, this is a necessary work for us to continue doing the work. I think focusing, obviously, on maintenance, current maintenance is extremely important, but also focusing on the future is also as important. So that balance of funding, of projects, that this will, this, this levy will fund, to me, was a, allowed me to, to want to support this, this initiative. So thank you all for all the work you did. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Kurt?
Thanks. Thanks for the presentation, and I'm feeling reflective a little bit, too, on when this was first brought up, and we were talking about the budget, and I was wondering, like, why are we funding maintenance of our critical infrastructure, and why are we funding operations like vegetation maintenance and snow plowing and traffic lights with funds that we don't know whether the voters will support or not? I think my understanding has really grown from this, and I think I've grown as an elected, too, a little bit, in learning to trust that our community can decide, and they can have that say in whether they support being a part of the, the infrastructure that we have and that we share. And I, I know that the safety, everyone values safety, but when it comes to putting a price on it, you've done a really good job of making sure that we strike a balance between the shiny new projects that every elected wants to see and cut ribbons, but understanding that we have obligations, we've done ribbon cutting for a generation, two generations, five, and so now it's time to maintain, and, and that's a really valuable thing that our community has grown to depend on. And so having this transparency and having the accountability of being responsive to our voters and our community and saying, this is what we're doing with the money, and this is, this is where your dollars are going, is really valuable. So I've done a lot of growing and learning, and thank you for bringing me along in that process. I'm really excited to support this as well.
Are you ready for a motion?
No, I want to say something first. Did you talk already? I'm losing track.
No, and I'm, I'm good.
Are you good? Okay.
Great work, everybody.
No, I, I just want to say thank you as well. I had some of the same thoughts that Councilmember Kurt did originally, but the, the truth is, we went and did a lot of work to figure out kind of what our community wants, what they value, and I think we're giving our community exactly what they want. There's a good mix of new projects, because our community wants those, too. It's not just up, you know, the ribbon cutter's up here. But, but also, like, our roads are in really good shape, and the reason it's in really good shape is because we have the funding to keep them in good shape, and the great Public Works Department that does the work. But a big part of that is because we have this funding source for it. So I am looking forward to cutting some ribbons, but I'm also looking forward to just having infrastructure that's well-maintained. So I, I feel really good about sending this to the ballot. Our community's already voted for it once, and I hope they do it again.
Thank you. And councilmembers absolutely agree that, I think sometimes societally, we, we back away from the word accountability and worry about that, but really, our tax structure in Washington State is built for that accountability to the people who have to pay it, and it isn't, there isn't a, a path of where the revenue generation just keeps going up and up and up. We need to go out and talk to voters, and in order to have credibility with the voters, we need to deliver on what we say we're, we're going to do. And again, I think we're in a, in a strong position and have a good story to tell, because we did go out and our teams have responded, and they continue to find ways of doing it even better, to deliver the promise to the Bothell community. So we, again, with your, with your vote, and if we do, we get the, that nod from you tonight, we do look forward to the community being able to, to have their voice in terms of whether or not they, they've liked what they've received, that they like the conditions, and they want that to continue, and we, we look forward to hearing from them. So thank you.
Now I would love a motion. Councilmember Dodd?
Thank you, and thank you to everyone. I worry that what I said earlier sounded flippant, but the fact that you have answered all of the deputy mayor's questions this whole time means that I have none. So therefore, I would move the recommended action.
Second.
I've got a motion from Councilmember Dodd, and a second from Councilmember Alderks. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurt?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes 6-0.
All right. Thank you. Yes, it is, we will recess until 8:15. We have a study session right now for the Economic Vitality Plan. I'm going to kick it over to the City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and we're looking forward to tonight's discussion. We are here tonight to provide an overview of the draft Economic Vitality Plan. It's stopping here before it becomes final. And just for a little context setting, many of you participated in a council retreat a few years ago, and there were vision areas, to your, to a vision that was developed of what does Bothell look like in 2040? One of those areas has to do with, with economics, and within that, you know, within the description of economic vitality includes phrases, the opening is, Bothell's economic engines power the city and empower residents and workers to enjoy economic security. Rising entrepreneurs enjoy a smooth path to starting a new business. A variety of walkable and accessible businesses contribute to thriving neighborhood centers. Diverse revenue streams turn the economic success of our community into amenities that enrich the lives of all who come to Bothell. You're going to see some of these themes, interestingly enough, coming from this plan, and it was not drawn from your vision, it was drawn from the feedback of businesses in our community. So I share that framing just to, again, tie things together. Now, again, how did we get here as well, is that you may remember that one of the, one of the priorities then that was also said of how are we going to accomplish that, was creating an economic vitality plan to enhance business. of how are we going to accomplish that was creating an economic vitality plan to enhance business growth, including a commercial facility inventory, strategies to attract and remain Bothel resident owned businesses, identify neighborhoods with potential economic generators, and, and there's more. So, um, all that to be said, we're excited to then present to you tonight of what, some of the feedback that we heard and then some of the long-term and short-term strategies to get there. Tonight, there's no action required, but again, this is an opportunity, since this was something that you really commissioned with your priorities of, is this, uh, is this plan, is there anything else you would want to see? Or do you think this is something that's ready to adopt? And then with, with future updates coming to council, because that's, that's part of this, is that the plan won't do anything. What will happen is the actions tied to the plan and we want to be able to measure, is it having an impact? So we'll be seeking that feedback from you tonight. Uh, and we'll, we do plan on returning to council for adoption of this plan because it will also set up the opportunities of having periodic updates with council. And if there's any changes to the strategies that, um, if, if, what, what you're looking for or you're not seeing the, the impacts or you're hearing from businesses, that there needs to be a course correction, we certainly want to provide that. So I mentioned a little bit about the vision and, um, how we came to this earlier in the introduction. Um, and again, though, we just want to center this around, the bottom line is that we are looking to create economic vitality plan that enhances business growth, whatever that may be. Whether that's an established business or line of business, or if it's helping, uh, an individual start a business for the first time, we want Bothel to have the reality of that that's where people choose to, to go on those journeys. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to our economic development coordinator, Ashish Joshi, who has been, uh, really behind moving this work forward, literally from day one of his journey. I also want to thank, we had a steering team that has been working with Ashish to really think about, how are the, how do we apply what we're hearing to make it real? And that consisted of our deputy city manager, Tony Call, our community development director, Jason Greenspan, and our finance director, Kwan Wong. With that, I'm going to turn things over to Ashish to walk you through a little bit more details of the plan.
Thank you, Kyle, and thank you, uh, Mayor, deputy mayor, councilmembers. Um, I also want to thank, um, joined us, join, uh, joining us today is, uh, James Kim from our consultant Echo Northwest. Um, and, uh, that partnership with Echo, um, it was, allowed us to extend our capacity and focus on the data-driven elements to provide this plan and also provide a third-party perspective of our, of our economy throughout the process. Um, I want to start with a quote. Um, we, um, reached out to our, uh, large employers and we connected with nine, um, of those major employers that cover roughly around, uh, more than thirty percent of our total workforce. Um, and what we heard from them, um, uh, it was that, uh, Bothel is a hidden gem and we, they want to be able to connect that charm to their employees. So that theme of connection, um, is something that is the fabric of the plan. Um, we have some key questions that we want the, uh, that we want to connect with the council. Um, one, does the plan reflect the council's economic vitality priority to enhance business growth? Um, are there gaps or adjustments to the prioritization of those actions, uh, related to the short and medium term work, uh, through 2030? And, uh, do the metrics and outcomes reflect the progress city council envisions by 2030? Our process started, uh, last year in April. Um, we, um, worked with our Echo, um, to first start with a landscape, um, thirty thousand foot view of our economy and then find the trends that are working, the strengths, the opportunities. And then, uh, we took that information and then we wanted to hear from our community. So we developed our first ever business survey to reach our community on the broad scale. And then from there, we wanted to fill in, uh, the gaps and the details. So we, um, connected with them further upon that and then formed all that information together to common themes. And, um, in the early parts of this year, we took those themes, um, and feedback from council to adjust, um, one of those themes especially, um, and then looked at the role of the city and, um, what capacity is needed in the future potentially? Um, and then tying those into, uh, concrete actions, um, both the low hanging fruit and then also the, uh, actions that can kind of work on a framework, um, in terms of economic development in the city. Going back to that, um, uh, engagement with the business community that heavily informed the plan, uh, we formed our first ever business survey that was the broad outreach to the community and focused on getting a representative sample. We wanted to touch all the industries, we wanted to touch all businesses of all sizes and then also all over the city. So, uh, for example, we heard a lot, uh, within the first week, uh, from downtown. So we want to make sure we heard from Thrasher's Corner. So we, uh, walked, uh, the streets and connected with businesses one-on-one to make sure that they knew about this survey and, uh, try to get them more involved. Because, um, as we'll talk about later, uh, traditional business engagement is usually only focused on when something is wrong. So, um, then we followed that up with, uh, one-on-one interviews, uh, with that group. Also, uh, we heard a little bit less from our larger businesses. So we had five of those, uh, twenty-four businesses were focused on large business outreach and we wanted to hear a little bit more, um, on what they talked, uh, wanted to, uh, connect with us on. And, uh, in terms of what we heard, um, uh, we wanted to hear, where are we right now in terms of an economy? Um, and the way they feel about our economy. And overall, we're in, um, a good place to start. So, um, all of these metrics, um, do compare with some of our peer cities and we are in generally the same, some, same realm. Um, uh, not to be too competitive, but one of our peer cities, for example, um, in terms of Bothel being a better place, uh, or that city being a better place to do business, um, is seventy percent. Um, and, um, so we are in a little bit better shape, uh, to start with. And there's, there's a lot of different things that go into that, uh, but overall, we're in a good shape. So, um, one thing that we wanted to do as part of this outreach is that we let, uh, our community know what we heard from them. So we did do a mailer in terms of the results from our survey to all of our businesses that we ended up, that we sent the survey to. Um, and we also connected that information with our larger businesses and organized that first ever city, uh, large employer roundtable. And we wanted to hear, um, where are things that we can, uh, we have shared value on? And where are, uh, areas that we may be able to collaborate? So, uh, the one thing that we, um, the, the major thing we wanted, we heard was intentionality in terms of how we collaborate. And, um, uh, the other, uh, nice part of that is that there was enthusiasm for continued momentum. So how do we continue that interaction and how do we, uh, expand that, um, communication as well? So all that leads together into the three themes that underlie this plan. Uh, first is focusing on a robust small business ecosystem. Second, um, which, uh, thanks to feedback from the council in our last session, is focused on, uh, broad thriving industries and the innovation economy in Bothel. And, um, la- uh, lastly is a little bit of how everything ties together, how, uh, we create vibrant districts that support that connection between residences, small business, large business, and the public realm. And then, um, all these actions, who are we, uh, trying to connect them with? So ultimately it, uh, focused on two types of businesses. Uh, the one that may reach a hurdle and how can we help them get over that? Um, and then the second one is, uh, the, uh, business that has an idea and they don't know where to start or they don't know the possibilities. So, um, how can we help educate and connect them with that so that they can reach the full potential, uh, from that innovation, um, it, uh, innovation, innovative, um, spirit that they have? So how can we maximize those? Um, all those lead into actions that go over the short term and medium term. Um, on the small, uh, to, uh, they venture from, um, short-term actions like white boxing, which relates to, um, tenant spaces and improvements and, uh, making it, uh, that shell that a business moves into, um, be the best place where they can kind of get up and running as fast as possible. Um, to something more broad and, uh, a general partnership with our campus, for example, and leading to, uh, more and more opportunities so that, um, people going to our, our North Shore schools, uh, can get, uh, an opportunity at the, um, at a campus and then maybe connect to a, a job in Bothel as well. And then all of these are measured, um, by trends, um, that will cover the general of, uh, economic vitality. So in 2030, what are we looking at to see, are we making progress? Um, the four measures, um, employment growth, um, whether we, uh, the, the specialization and diversification, which is both measured, measured through a location quotient. And, and location quotient is where, um, for example, the bioscience industry, um, we see, uh, higher intensity here than in, uh, in another city. So that would be a more specialization example. Um, and then, um, the diamond here is also the decision point. So we will be getting more information on kind of that balance that works best, um, between specialization, diversification, because ultimately they are two different avenues. Uh, and then, um, uh, ultimately, like we mentioned before, the business satisfaction and how can we, uh, continue to have our businesses feel like this is the best, best place to do business? And, um, as, um, outside of macroeconomic trends, um, how do they, uh, how can we make them feel that in one to two years, I want to spend more to invest, whether it's, uh, expansion, whether it's hiring more employees and elements like that? So, uh, we're, we'll be taking, um, the incorporated feedback from today and return to the council with the economic vitality plan for adoption. And, um, lastly, just want to echo, um, Kyle's mention to, uh, thanks to our steering team, um, that helped us throughout the process to develop this and also staff at all levels across the city. Um, the, uh, being close to my one-year anniversary as well, um, I, uh, have never felt more of a better example in terms of people moving together toward a common purpose. And that's, um, present on all levels and all throughout the city. So, um, I wanted to, uh, give those thanks and then connect it back to you all. So, um, want to hear your feedback in terms of, um, broadly, does this meet, uh, what you imagined in terms of your, um, economic vitality priority? Um, are there gaps in terms of the actions, um, or different prioritization that you'd like to see? Um, as we work through that through 2030? And then, um, are the metrics and outcomes reflecting the progress that you want to see as well?
I'll start. I think one of the strengths of this report, um, and, and your presentation is that it's broken down by, um, oh, which slide was that? The three, the small businesses, thriving industries, and vibrant districts. And that connects really well to the, um, executive summaries that are in the packet with, um, you know, what are the short-term actions and outcomes and medium term as well? Um, so I found like the real meat of, of this work, um, in those, in those tables. Um, and I really appreciated seeing that there's, there's, you know, like, you've clearly found a direction to move in and, um, and opportunities to, you know, to support, to partner, to be creative. Um, you know, and, and that is, I really appreciate how not only heard, I feel as a council member, but also, um, it sounds like the community, like the business community also feels heard too. And you've got some really good feedback. Um, one question that I have, oh, okay, sorry, I'm not done complimenting you because I have compliments. Um, really impressed that you were willing to walk door-to-door to visit businesses. Um, I was really hoping that that would be a strategy used to reach out to some of the, uh, businesses that are just not as aware of what's going on at the city and haven't, you know, maybe have felt overlooked in the past. And, and so not paying attention, not look, you know, whatever, whatever factors into that, um, that you reached out to them and you were, you know, working to build a relationship. And that, that is what I was hoping to see and so thank you very much for doing that. Question that I have is where do sponsorship opportunities fit into this plan? Maybe it's in there and I, I didn't see it.
So it was part of our engagement and, uh, part of that, um, is the, the framework of that collaboration. So especially with the larger employers, for example, uh, we want to, uh, we, um, recently, uh, our finance team has a sponsorship kind of process. And, um, the main thing is as the, um, businesses have been transitioning, they, uh, we used to be a little bit more engaged on, for example, music in the park in, uh, past years. Um, there, uh, and sometimes that ebbs and flows. Uh, right now it is, uh, increasing interest. So, uh, we're, uh, working on that communication to, how do we continue that momentum and how do we connect?
Knowing, knowing you and like where your heart's at too, is, it'll take it one layer below sponsorship as well is that volunteer opportunities. And one of the things in the large business roundtable that we heard, and I was just going to shy away from naming companies, but I think this one will become obvious, but AT&amp;T had a presence in Bothel and then post-COVID, they relocated to another community. But they've now relocated all the way back to Bothel, but in a different location. And employees are different and things have changed. But the, the individual who represented AT&amp;T was sharing with us that they've created an employee resource committee of like, how do we, how do we make this new location, um, home for us as employees? And that was one of the top priorities that they had is that they were looking for, how can we get civically involved? And so just through this process and having conversations, we were then able to make that connection, um, to that resource and offer to come to one of their team meetings to really talk through what those opportunities are. And so it's, yeah, it's the, it's the, it's the big, the, the corporate side of, of sponsorship and the, the human side of volunteerism too, which, uh, I think is a, a cool, cool bookend.
Well, yeah, you anticipated my next question, which was, are any businesses looking for sponsorship opportunities? And it sounds like yes, and then like one-upped me in my thinking and, and I, I love that. Um, have, has, this is, I guess, now expanding out more towards like human services, but have, um, like businesses who are interested in those kinds of volunteering opportunities been connected to our human services coordinator and opportunities to volunteer in the community beyond like parks and Fourth of July and that kind of thing? Although I love those opportunities as well.
That is something that we're working toward in terms of the framework and how, uh, what are the, kind of, um, uh, if we have Play-Doh, what's a model that you can, someone can plug into really fast? And, uh, so that's something that we're working on. Um, uh, this is something that we'll be talking about next week, uh, in terms of, um, connecting, uh, to a, uh, adjacent human, um, services organization. Uh, for example, one of our pop shops wanted to, our, our incoming pop shops wanted to get connected with, um, uh, Alyssa Burnett Center and their, uh, their work. And that, that's one example that, that connection's been made and, um, will, will be, um, a testbed for a couple of things.
I love to hear that, uh, thank you. And then, um, last question I have for you before others can speak up. Um, how do the sub-area plans connect into this work? And how will this work guide future sub-area planning efforts?
Yeah, so, um, especially for, in terms of vibrant districts. So the, the three districts that came up, um, are, um, downtown, uh, Canyon Park and North Creek. Um, and especially the Canyon Park Sub Area Plan as that goes into implementation. Um, the, this is supposed to complement and also, uh, at the same time, uh, overlap in a Venn diagram a little bit as well. And, uh, the, one key element, um, would be, um, the, as we try to figure out, what's the balance of, um, we, we have questions that come in in terms of residential, um, small commercial, large commercial. What's the right balance that is, uh, promotes a shared growth? And um, what information can we get from that uh to help us make our decisions as well?
Okay, great. Um, thanks for the information about, you know, those three areas of kind of rising too. I I know that uh businesses in North Creek have wanted to attract more for their employees to be there. So like instead of, that there's more for their employees to do around where they work. Um, and so it it's really great to hear that that feedback coming up through this process too. Thank you.
Related to that, well first, thank you. It was a great comprehensive uh report, so I appreciate you and, you know, everybody who worked on it. So I thank you so much. Uh, questions about uh just high level? How does this um? Uh, the space inventory, how does it relate to the corner stores in comp in the comp plan that we talk about? And then even higher level, how does it relate to housing, transportation, parks, et cetera, et cetera, in the comprehensive plan? Because they all have to work together at some point, yeah.
So uh, one uh benefit of the um s- uh, commercial inventory relates to some of our business attraction work, for example. And so as we attract um companies that um uh to those spaces and the information about those spaces. Uh, it'll help inform the uh in terms of the employees that they're bringing in. Uh, and uh, that bal- overall balance so that we can figure out. Um, the, for example, in in the report, we mentioned uh the one, the benefit of flex spaces. And that attracts some of those innovative companies such as um Ion Q uh in the last few years. Um, in Canyon Park, we have several space companies, which uh is a very big interest recently. Um, but the uh, talking to one of those business owners that um. We we heard uh the things that attract their employees to the area. Uh, so uh, he um, uh, lives in uh the upper, upper side of Bothell. Um, and um, he's trying to hire uh around thirty year old employees um in terms of the manufacturing side. And the three things that he um, they're they're most interested in is uh uh housing affordability and availability. Um, the um access that we have transportation wise, which will be having um the bus rapid transit. To um, all, pretty much all around us. And um, will be uh have access to the light rail as well so that they say they want to go to a a Mariners game or World Cup. Then they they uh are able to do that. Um, and.
You're speaking my language now. Continue with the World Cup themes.
Yep, and um, the uh, and is still able to have the quality of life, which is the second. Uh, element that they want, that 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 Bothell provides. So um, all those elements uh are, we're trying to figure out the balance uh ultimately is uh in 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 short.
Uh, I understand, yeah, and thank you. I mean, there is multiple sizes of businesses that we want to attract. I mean, there's gonna be uh, uh. A small, the people who just do work uh uh home based stuff, people who want to open a small hole in the wall, like mom and pop type thing. You know, do sandwiches, whatever. And then you have manufacturing, then you have the big. Uh, systems, Ion Q and Sana and the other, and then the Collins, whatever, the the big space companies. But then there is the stuff that the information, the feedback comes from the employers. But then like, what do we want to do? We have a comprehensive plan. How do we combine the two things? I mean, business is there to make a profit. They're not gonna care about, let's build more housing, you know? But if it helps them build, if it helps them become more profitable, then maybe, yes, you know? That's that's the, that's what I was asking, like, what are the connections?
And I think, you know, to Shisha's point, there there is an aspect of, there's, when I go visit a business, there's usually three themes that I expect to hear about. And some of it is connectivity of being able to get to and from where people need to go. Um, there's an overall workforce development component of that, of where our campus relationship is so helpful. But the third is around housing affordability and some of the numbers that you have seen, both in the conference plan and referred to in this report. Around the percentage of employees that live and work in the same community, that is something that is on businesses' minds. Because from the standpoint of, you know, you mentioned like, well, at the end of the day, do they care? But the reason they do care is because relocation is really expensive. And ultimately, if all their employees are moving further north, then they're gonna start complaining or they're gonna have employee turnover. So the the positive thing is, is that is, that is a a real leverage point that we can focus on. Um, you mentioned the the commercial inventory space. And I think one of the themes that I wanted to connect on that is, well, um, so the the council conversations around corner stores, I think, does. Help fill a gap that exists. Um, I I think about, what are the, what are the things that I've heard almost from day one of employment in the in Bothell? But one of those was around, you know, anecdotes of looking for commercial space to meet different types of businesses. We kind of have an inventory of, to your point of, it's not necessarily in that case about Canyon Park and in North Creek. It's about like in downtown or what are the retail opportunities that have a smaller form to support different types of businesses? So while we can't control that unless we start scooping up buildings and property, we can help influence that. And I think the inventory of being able to show, well, what does exist? And then what are the things that we're hearing from the business community, including the small business community of what they're looking for to take the next step to grow their business? Is something that we can then also communicate out to the people who do own um, that that do own the properties and the developers. As downtown continues to evolve this, to be able to show, here's what we're hearing from the business community of the the niche that they're looking for. And hopefully help influence, um, we have, we can influence through code, but we can also in- influence through this data and feedback. So we are hoping to have that information to be able, or that that information will help open up conversations that we can have with with future opportunities as well.
Yeah, it's uh, it's interesting because, you know, you see Microsoft connector, all the big employers, because their employees don't live near them. So they have to do shuttles, you know, and they pick up spots. But then people still have to drive to those pickup spots and then drive back home from those. Because like, it's a park and ride type thing, but they rent a parking lot from somebody and they do a park and ride. Like, can we, crazy idea, can we provide a service where we do this last mile or first mile, whatever you call it, from home to park and ride type shuttle service? Every ten minutes, circulator around different regions. But that could come with a partnership with the businesses, right?
Absolutely. I think with our, it, there, there's a a a longer, a longer lunch conversation. But I, you can get me going on on that of where I think the investment in what are the, what's the infrastructure that is already in place in terms of public transit? And how do we augment that? And I think um, we are having conversations with uh community transit as they pilot and explore some of that first mile, last mile. Um, and then we we maybe have any conversation here coming around, maybe talking to Metro as well. And there's a a additional council priority that does talk about circulator buses in the community. And um, well, probably isn't something that the city would would take on ourselves. I think our opportunity to influence and connect, um, again, is if we can get businesses to tell the story of that they need it and we have residential. Resident experiences saying that they need it, hopefully we can use that to influence attracting that sort of a vision. I think it's a, it's a great, uh, it's a great opportunity for this community.
One hundred percent. We don't have to do everything. We can partner and figure out who does. We can facilitate the conversations.
Even just getting bus service up to like Skyview Canyon Creek, there's an area in the northeast of the city that isn't part of a transportation benefit district. And it's been years since it's been tried to include them, like, that's something that it would just be our public bus service. It, I always lament when there's a private bus that comes in because it it takes away circulation on the buses. And it it just, it's, it's sort of a competing service. So whatever we can do to encourage using the buses we have and making sure that the service we get meets our residents' needs would be really cool. But maybe don't unleash me on a bus provider right now because I have a lot of thoughts.
Thank you for the presentation. Um, I, no, I won't be looking at that. Um, thank you for the presentation. I really appreciate the data and the methodologies that are outlined in the um packet. Um, I want to learn more about um. The tax receipts from retail and whether that includes um, like when someone buys something online. That's not really a Bothell business necessarily, um, that's generating that sales tax. And so how, how are we understanding? Um, if, if uh, uh, something is purchased in Bothell. At a retail location in Bothell or from an online retailer based in Bothell. How, how is that, how does that get assessed out in the data? And how, how are we not over representing um retail as a part of our like sales tax um mosaic?
I think I'll probably have to get back to you on the full details on that one. Um, I believe it uh, it does cover both. Um, and uh, yeah, Quantifinance Direct is probably a lot better uh source on that one. Um, uh, related to that as well is um, a lot of our um. Uh, manufacturing, um, the sales uh, uh, related to instruments are tied in. Uh, so say if we have um, uh, elements of an instrument that go into, where where does the kind of retail uh sales tax? Um, count really? Um, there there are um, a a couple of elements that um, we want to keep an eye on. And it's also something that we want to develop uh consistent tracking for. So um, as we come up to council for updates, but also to help inform um citywide initiatives. Uh, that's something that we want to work on.
Yeah, thanks. I think I'm remembering back to the comp plan discussions. Where one of the maybe outcomes or one of the um intermediate findings. That was in the red line was that retail had a pretty low location quotient at the time of the. And it was being you maybe construed in some of the strategies to say, basically Bothell doesn't need any more retail locations. But that wasn't maybe um representative of some of the like wider story that we're hearing out of the rest. So I'm just like trying to justify what this plan is saying and what some of the earlier conversations that we. Maybe weren't having verbally um in the uh comp plan, but we're coming through some of the data and some of the findings. So um, it's okay to wait and see and learn more too, and I'm sure it's an evolving thing. And you've been going deeper into the conversations with with um businesses too. So that was something that wasn't done as part of the comp plan work. And so now we're learning different things and um refining our understanding. So, cool.
Yeah, and also um tied to, uh, included in our comp plan was the retail leakage study that helped um some of that. And um, as we work through the implementation of the vitality plan, um expanded information based off of that is gonna be part of it as well.
Okay, um, one, one frustration that I have is lost opportunity when we talk about walkability. Woodenville's getting Trader Joe's, Bothell isn't. So there's a little bit of grieving going on there. I have questions, so I'll try to be as as quick as possible on my end. Um, do both tenants and landlords find that they need assists in the white boxing? Like, it, the question is, is there retail space that's just lying fallow? Because the what, it's a space that needs improvement? And if it could be improved by white boxing, then it would open up, you know, maybe more tenants being interested? Or is, or is it more just from the tenant's end of, that's a financial hurdle for them?
We have heard from both. Um, yeah, we've heard more from the tenant's side.
Okay.
Um, the, um, and then um, it 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 is scaled as well. So uh, it, on one hand, we also mentioned the size of um retail location. Uh, 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 also affecting the affordability of um retail, commercial retail. And uh, uh, very, very small scale, uh, white boxing is a little bit of our pop shop program. So that's an empty shell that's ready for them to kind of do what they wish. Um, and then for some of our vacant uh retail. Um, uh, part of the, we we've seen there are a few cases where. Um, the, whether it's infrastructure improvements or uh elements like that. Um, sometimes uh prevent a gap, whether it's with the landlord finding a tenant. Or a tenant um kind of making that jump, um, whether it's uh their interest is more from the smaller tenants that may need more support. Rather than maybe uh a one that's uh a bigger box that would, that would be able to kind of just kind of get that done. So part of that is is also learning more.
Okay, yeah, I I have that, another follow up question that's tabbed in here somewhere and I'll, while it's on my head, I'll ask. Uh, there's mentioning of grants for white boxing. Do we know where we would, we would source that money from at this point in our budget?
Uh, not at this point. That's something that we would be looking at. And it would be looking at um, uh, other, uh, based on programs in other Washington cities for maybe a baseline.
Okay.
And then adapting it to our unique needs.
Okay, okay. It's always good to see what other people are doing. Um, and then a- another question, I said, I I think I saw year three, there was a point of talking about. Moving from specialization to diversification. Is there something that you look for in particular about that would trigger either doing that sooner or later? In moving from specialization to a diversification point?
So um, with the specialization and diversification, right? Uh, first, we want to find kind of what's the balance that we have right now.
Okay.
Um, well, we have a little bit of nature of that, but we want to see um in terms of growth, uh, what what's kind of working. Um, and then um, as we see uh maybe growth in one more than the other. Um, we can use that to compare to the pros and cons. So for specialization, the, some of the pros sometimes can be that you'll have an industry that is maybe on exponential growth. And uh, it's, it's increasing, but then uh during one downturn focused on maybe that industry, then we're, we're in trouble. Oh, and then diversification, you may not have that exponential growth, but then more maybe stability. So um, it's uh taking all those together and then weighing it.
There's a lot of variables, in other words, yeah, which makes sense. Um, uh, when we were thinking about economic growth, I I was wondering what, you know, what are triggers for looking for economic growth? And birth rate is one, and I thought, do we, do we tap into what, you know, are we looking at? If we're trying to measure economic success, do we tap into like the school districts or day, growing daycare? Of, you know, there's more children being involved as a indication that we're growing economically. Um, and then I know another component of uh being economically attractive is having. A, your first responders with a real high rating and Bothell does, which is great. But that's a, you know, priority that as we work comprehensively as a city, we're we're mindful that. What's happening with our police and fire can impact, have a chain reaction in areas that we don't necessarily anticipate. Um, and I I'm just gonna go through my tabbed off things. Um, uh, I think that there's another comment here that what, what does the city need to enhance to appeal to local residents? I had someone yet again flag me that I bumped into to Costco saying, parking, I can't go into downtown because I can't park. So I think that there's a mention of that somewhere in here. It's just, you know, that necessary evil. Um, I saw the, working with uh our Cascadia and U of D Bothell. And I really would like to encourage that may, I think, encourage thinking about finding places for apprenticeships. And tapping in to make Lake Washington. Um, everybody needs an, especially with the industries that we're talking about here in Bothell, everybody needs an electrician. And so if we can find ways, I think I saw MSRC has a class or sub focus in on apprenticeships on a, on a city level. And having um fostering that. So if we could foster apprenticeships, I think that would be a great, a great thing to do. Um, I love your metrics. Um, one thing, because it's personal, because I have a child who has two bioscience degrees. And I hear from her and her friends all the time that doing lab work is not always a livable wage, that they all have to have roommates, which is, you know, part of life. But um, something to be, if we are attracting lab workers, we got to think about what their wages are and what they, what they need to live on. wages are and what they what they need to live on. Oh, small business of the small business, what are the types that need more help and what are the types of the small businesses and what what are the small businesses that need less help? Can does anybody spring to mind on that?
I do have groupings. So we did look at in industries and size of businesses. We did see more the startup stage requested more help. And we did see in terms of our diverse businesses, the they found similar challenges to most small businesses, but they they found those challenges on a greater scale. So, for example, access to capital for most for the broad scale businesses, it was a challenge. But for our BIPOC businesses, they found it two to three times more of a challenge on 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 whole. So part of that is due to relationships with the we have a organization compared to a bank. So some people may have be able to get easier relationships with the bank. So in terms of support, organizations like community development, financial institutions may be an alternative that may be able to bridge that and kind of close that gap a little bit more.
So that's more just across the board of regardless what the small business type is, it's getting getting off the ground and getting getting their business going is where the and it's less business type dependent. It's just being a small business that's starting.
Yeah, exactly. And we did hear we did see some differences by industry. But with our so while we had a representative sample, by the time you dig down, you'll dig down a little too much when you get to the industries in terms of they answer this industry answered this question.
Right.
So as we build that connection between our small businesses, we can have a little bit more robust data and be able to address that and target that.
Yeah, and I know you're going to need to do that because some of the replies that you got were very small samples. And so one respondent can't be reflective of everybody. I mean, you can extrapolate from there, but yes. Oh, there was a question. There's a comment that several businesses highlighted that small smaller commercial spaces are hard to come by in Bothell that that the ones that are available are too large. What would be too large? What I mean, what are the examples of too large?
So for the this isn't reflective of all small business requests, but sometimes more than five thousand square foot.
Okay.
Sometimes it can be very micro. And that's also why we've heard a lot of interest and feedback related to pop shops because sometimes although I like coming from business before, I could never imagine doing business in that size, the amount of amazing things that business owners are able to do, especially in the industries coming from home based businesses, they're able to do a lot with that space.
It probably forces them to just kind of crystallize to the most salient things that have impact for them, which is a is a good thing. Oh, my goodness, okay. I'm over ten minutes. I was timing myself, so I'll try to keep it under eleven minutes. I on on one, I guess its last page was one of the ideas was to host mixers and networking events to specific different industries to foster collaboration. Is is that something that could be done independent? I love our Chamber of Commerce, but is that something that can be done for? There's a lot of businesses that aren't part of the Chamber of Commerce. So is that something that can be done independent of the Chamber of Commerce in fostering that community and giving people an opportunity to to mix and grow and and innovate?
Yeah, absolutely. So on one hand, while, like you mentioned, the the chamber is a good partner, and we want to be able to work with them to expand their offerings, there is a lot of opportunity outside that. So one that we are already part of is Startup 425. Bothell is one of the six cities that are a part of that in our local agreement. And Startup 425 has monthly events, but also not on the networking side, but also on the education side has an accelerator. So our businesses and we actually had a pop shop that was a part of the first ever cohort for that accelerator and was we we heard from the the manager that our they said Bothell businesses were the best represented in that in that group. So we want to that that's connecting them through those programs is one. And then as we talked about the partnerships with the campus, for example, the we've connected already with the UW Bothell School of Business. And they're they're they do work in that in that realm and on the education side, but also how to network in terms of what questions do I ask to get the most out of networking?
That's a that's a huge thing of knowing the questions to ask. Often, often, if I'm feeling out of my league, I'll say to someone, what is the question that I'm not asking?
Yeah.
So that that's a good tool to have in your toolbox.
And also, just as we work on these districts, we want businesses to be able to organically form those groups. So we have a few groups in the city like the Rotary and groups like that, but they're are fought with the districts. So we're fostering, we want to foster more communication so that every business in Canyon Park at least at least knows their name each other's name. They they may not connect all the time, but they feel the opportunity that is that they want to connect.
Build a community.
Exactly.
Thank you. This is really excellent. I really appreciate the work here. Thanks.
You guys, that's really good questions. I don't have any more. You ready to go?
I didn't have too much. As the city manager talked about, I think one of the things that's always on my mind is people who can't find space, people whose I I think lately I've heard about a couple of businesses that have left their spaces because the rent was going to be too much. And that, to me, seems like if there was more competition and more space available, you couldn't charge enough that your business would no longer be able to operate there because you would be competing with space around you. So this is all great. I also am just interested in growing the amount of commercial and retail space so that we don't see people leaving. I mean, that's that's such a loss. And there's I recently had a chance to look at a list of businesses that I'd closed that someone had shared. And sometimes it's the owner's, you know, family environment, it's retirement. But when it's that they can't afford the rent, what a loss. I don't know, I can't say that enough, but I can, so I'll stop. So that's still on my mind, and I just look forward to learning about that, which is not to say that this isn't all great information. Like, this is work I don't think I've seen before as either a resident or as a, you know, as a council member. So I really appreciate it. It's great stuff. Thank you.
Sounds like housing, build more housing, prices go down, build more commercial spaces. Oh, man, he's twisted his thing, so I must have said something.
No, I was just gonna say, build more Bothell in Bothell.
Well, and that's the thing is, you know, this is all tied together, like, people who want to work in life sciences but can't afford rent, rent is high because we don't have a lot, we don't have enough housing for the people who want to live here. So all of our decisions are interconnected. So hopefully, this is all of us seeing what we need to do.
We do have one action that may tie into that a little bit more in terms of mixed use spaces. And what we've heard in the region in terms of as these developments happen, usually the retail is present, but it isn't the focus because the the majority of the 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 money they make back is on the residential side. But they there is interest in terms of how all of that can kind of balance together and the information that we'll get with that continuous engagement with the community and highlighting exactly what you've heard as well from those businesses directly in front and easily seen to to help inform that and then help those conversations.
I have some follow up questions that have been inspired by this conversation, but I'm going to save them for check in with our city manager later this month. Thank you.
Well, good. Well, I'll look forward to that. And certainly, if there's anything else that comes to mind outside of this meeting, sending the questions to Ashish and myself, we'll certainly look at that and especially as we bring this back for follow up. I did for adoption, I did capture a couple of follow ups that we will we'll be working on, including, again, a little bit more about the the sales tax generation and how it was calculated in. And that also gives us some opportunity to think about as we're setting up our measures going forward, if there's a different way of breaking it out. Because I think that is the exciting thing of sometimes we inherit plans that have been around and we're updating a number of plans because it's time to do that. Starting on a fresh start, sometimes is like such a great blessing and relief, but we want to make sure that the plan is is actionable and meaningful going forward. So that's where we're we're laser focused on making sure that we have measures to people to report out to council to say, here's what we're seeing so that if we do need to adjust, we can do that. So thank you for the feedback tonight. I think we got exactly what we're looking for and appreciate appreciate your review of the report and the feedback tonight. It's extremely helpful.
I think we're adjourned.